All righty, good evening, Commissioners, and welcome, everyone. And over to your call order, Chair Harrington.
Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, May 28, 2024, Washington County Board of Commissioners meeting. We are just getting ourselves settled because we just took a picture with a special group that we have here joining us tonight through our Washington County Civic Leaders Program, supported through Adelante Mejes. So, thank you very much for your time this evening. So, Clerk Moss, could you do us the honors, please?
Certainly, Chair Harrington. Washington County Board of Commissioners, also meeting as the Board of Directors for Clean Water Services in all other county service districts, is now meeting this regular session, May 28, 2024. Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Commissioner Treese?
Here.
Commissioner Willie?
Here.
Vice Chair Fay?
Present.
Chair Harrington?
Here. Thank you, Clerk Moss. The next item on our agenda is the first of two public comment sections that we have in tonight's meeting. This is an opportunity for members of our community, whether here in the auditorium with us or attending by Zoom, to come and speak to us on any subject they would like for up to two minutes an individual. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to do so?
We do, Chair Harrington. The first two we have up is Katie Riley and Dale Feek.
Welcome.
Thank you for having us. My name is Katie Riley. I live in Hillsborough, and I'm here tonight as President of Washington County Kids, and we're supporting the request that was made to do a needs analysis for after-school and summer programs in Washington County. And this is following on the needs analysis that you already funded for early learning. And this would, the needs analysis we're talking about for older kids would complete the picture of what the needs are for kids during non-school time. Currently, nobody knows how many kids are in after-school and summer programs in the county, and that means we don't know who is not in those programs. And those programs are very important because they're preventative for problems, plus they actually help kids in their academic success and in their future lives as well. The cost estimate that was given for this needs analysis would cost between $100,000 and $162,000, depending upon which components of the needs analysis were competed, completed. And we had suggested that this be funded out of ARPA funds because it's very appropriate, and that's what, those funds were what funded the needs analysis for early learning as well. We do know that in the juvenile department, there's a study of kids and what they do before they get into the purview of the juvenile department is that 2/3 of the kids that they serve have not been in any extracurricular activities at all. So it's really important that we see if we can support these kind of activities. And we appreciate very much your attention to this, and we would appreciate it if you would fund this study. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Feek.
Thank you, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. I'm Dale Feek, and I'm two hats. I'm speaking for myself, the second half. First half, I'm speaking for Washington County Citizen Action Network, but I'm doing a third. I totally support Katie Riley. I've made public comment at the state legislature in support of her program, and I let her know I'm going to keep donating to her program, so please, please consider funding it. The two items you have before you is, the first one I want to talk about is Intel. I filed a Freedom of Information Form to EPA based upon the, seven years ago, I requested an unannounced inspection of Intel's plants in Rottler Acres in Aloha, and EPA finally did it in October of 2023. And so I'm getting the report from that, and there is questions about confidential information, and EPA is really challenging some of Intel's statements and forcing them to say why they should consider some of that confidential. And as you know, as I said in the past, Intel puts out all kinds of toxic air commissions, air emissions that are detrimental to people's public health. That's Washington County Citizen Action Network. Next, I'm speaking for myself, because I sent you an email, and you got a copy of it now, and it's an article that Robert Wright wrote entitled "The True Meaning of Memorial Day in the Upcoming Election." And so it's on two pages of that, and the big thing is Donald Trump and his supporters are already trying to rewrite the history of the election of 2020 and what occurred in the weeks and ones following. An astounding number of Americans believe his big lie, a dismayed number of Republicans, lawmakers unwilling, are willing to accept and repeat the lie in order to remain in office and gain power. So please take a look at that, what it says. Small pictures, Intel, big picture is the national election. That's going to determine all kinds of stuff, whether EPA even gets funded. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Shio Mara and Lydia Marin. Shio Mara Batista and Lydia Marin.
I believe we have some interpretation.
Yes, Madam Chair.
For at least one of our presentations. Thank you. Is there any chance we can use the portable mic? So we have three mics?
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to be presented here before you. My name is Shio Mara Garcia. My, I am a member and a resident of the County of Washington, specifically the city of Beaverton. Of my roots, my national roots are from Venezuela, and I am, I am directing myself to you, all of those who are present today.
In the current time, in the current time, we're living in a very sharp crisis. It's derived through the substance abuse within the Latinx community, those who reside within our county. This topic is of great worry for all of our community, since we are not able to obtain the necessary help to be able to confront this crisis in a cultural form, linguistically, in a proper and a specific way. I know firsthand the pain and dissatisfaction or anxiety that one might live when one is living in a family with, when the members of that family falls into the traps of addictions, being, taking down the family nucleus to live in a situation that can actually destroy everything. This is the reason why we have, we have become united. We are a group of professionals within the area, and we have taken the initiative of a nonprofit organization to provide mentorship, companionship, education, prevention in the Latinx population historically. Historically, this population has remained unfavored. Where we encounter people in situations of life where they have, are going through very difficult situations, they are derived from disorder, and they are, have gone through abuse, substance abuse, this situation has become a very problematic situation within our county. In the current time, we are helping the Latinx community find, find the Latinx community who are confined within, within a jail within this county, and we are providing help, support through, through the path of a second opportunity. Today, our organization are, we are lacking a physical space where we can, we can impart these services or we can provide these services, that something that we can have lent. We, it's, we found it very difficult finding financial resources for the same purpose, and we are requiring. This is the reason why we are requiring your support, your help for this project of life. We are sure that, that this help for our community, we are sure that we can have help for, that this help for our community, we can, we would be able to demonstrate and reach the results that we need, we need. That we, we are. We are sure that we are able to reach, we are sure that we are able to demonstrate and reach the results that is needed due to the fact that we, we count on the group we are, together we have a group of professionals who are accredited, and they have personal lived experiences to be, to be able to bring forth this result. Beforehand, I would like to say thank you for all of the collaboration that you have lent us. We are sure that, that you, with this, with this alliance, with. We are sure that with, with you, with you all here today, this alliance of support would be of great help with the Latinx community. Thank you very much for allowing us this opportunity. Good afternoon to all those present. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
My name is Lydia Marin.
I'm a teacher's assistant. For pre-K, and I work in Hills, the county of Hillsborough, or the city of Hillsborough. Within the county of Washington and Hillsborough, we have seen the necessity to be able to amplify the programs for pre-K and for all of the families. Families that have immigrated, families in the agricultural, agricultural field, low-income family, and all of families in general. I've seen many, many children who are less than five years old who are wanting to enter into the programs of pre-K. And they're not eligible for the income that their parents are earning, and they are not pertinent to any programs. It worries me very much in this aspect that many children are left without this benefit. Due to the fact that the best learning is at an early age. At this point, children learn how to socialize. La lectura, las matemáticas, y mucho más. Literature, mathematics, and much more. They start playing and they start learning. The waiting lists are long. Many times, the, this period comes and they are not able, they are not able to take advantage of these benefits. We want, we want to get to a point where pre-K would be accessible to all of the children residing within the county of Washington. It would be of great benefit for all of the families before mentioned. Due to the factor, or since they wouldn't have to pay the high cost of pre-K. Or childcare. At the same time, all of these families are able to obtain a work, a job. Whilst their children are taken care of within pre-K. Through this, through this fact, these children are able to contribute to the county economically. I want to say thank you beforehand. Because I know that in some future. There will be pre-K for everybody. Within the county of Washington. That no child. Sin poder aprender. No child will be left without learning. Because they are the hope of our future. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the testimony this evening. We had two of our community members who are participating in the Washington County Civic Leaders Program. Thank you very much also to our translator for helping myself and others who do not speak Spanish understand what is important to our community members. So, thank you. All right, Clerk Moss, is there anyone else?
We had no one else sign up, and would any member online, we should provide public comment for up to two minutes, just utilize the raise hand function, give you just a moment. We have no hands online, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. Next on our agenda is this evening's consent agenda. We have four items tonight, one item from information technology, one from Health and Human Services, one from the Office of Community Development, and one from Emergency Management. What are the wishes of the Commission regarding tonight's consent agenda? Second? We have a motion and a second to adopt tonight's consent agenda. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Next, we'll move on to Board and Commissions. This evening, we have an opportunity to appoint members to the Washington County Garbage and Recycling Advisory Committee. We have an opportunity to appoint Ashvin Nagaraja to the, to the GRAC, as we refer to it in shorthand, for a term ending March 31 of 2028. Wow, we're looking out that far now. So, thank you to Ashvin for applying. What are the wishes of the Commission with regard to this appointment? So moved. Second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Next, we're going to move on to a proclamation, and this is a proclamation that comes to us from Clean Water Services, which is the second agency that we serve on as the Board of Directors. So, I'd like to turn it over to our expert staff.
Thank you, Chair, and fellow Board members. My name is Joe Gall. I'm the Chief Utility Relations Officer for Clean Water Services.
And good evening. I'm Tracy Rainey, Government Relations Manager for Clean Water Services.
So, we are here tonight for a proclamation, an important proclamation this month. I'm actually going to read the proclamation at the end, but since Scoggins is a federal project, Tracy Rainey is one of our key staff that have been monitoring this project, and she's going to give a brief introduction before I do the proclamation.
All right, thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening and for the opportunity to acknowledge the importance of dam safety. As you know, the Tuolotin Project, which includes both Scoggins Dam and Henry Haig Lake, currently serves as the region's primary water supply source, storing water for irrigated agriculture, municipal drinking water, industrial use, flood control, recreational purposes, fish and wildlife benefits, and for flow augmentation to maintain water quality in the Tuolotin River. Scoggins Dam is a federally owned facility that was constructed in 1975, and in 2010, the Bureau of Reclamation completed a seismic evaluation and a corrective action study which identified significant seismic vulnerabilities for the facility. Since that time, considerable work has been done to evaluate various design options that would address the seismic safety risks. We are grateful to our federal delegation, especially Senators Wyden and Merkley and Congresswoman Bonamici, as they have been instrumental in helping advance this project and in supporting additional funding for the Bureau of Reclamation's dam safety program, including passage of the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act of 2021. These funds were critical to accelerate this project, to reinforce the existing dam. The Bureau of Reclamation is currently working to complete an environmental impact statement for the project. It is anticipated that they will begin construction in 2029, with construction scheduled to be complete by 2035. Again, we are grateful to our federal delegation, the leadership of our board, past and present, and continued advocacy from our many partners in the region to advance this project, which will protect public safety and ensure the security of this important water source for our region. And with that, I'll hand it back over to Joe.
Thank you, Tracy. Before I read the proclamation, any questions from the Board for either of us? Okay. So, Scoggins Dam Safety Awareness Day, May 31, 2024. Whereas the failure of the South Fork Dam in Johnstown, Pennsylvania in 1889 resulted in more than 2,200 deaths, in the worst dam failure in the history of the United States, and the Federal Emergency Management Agency created National Dam Safety Awareness Day to promote individual and community responsibility for dam safety and to provide information on how to prevent future catastrophic dam failures. And whereas Scoggins Dam serves as one of the region's primary water supply sources for drinking water and irrigated agriculture, as well as flood control, recreation, and water quality benefits. And whereas Scoggins Dam is an earthfill embankment dam that the Bureau of Reclamation identified in 2010 as one of the most seismically vulnerable dams within its inventory, with a high potential to collapse in an extreme seismic event such as the Cascadia Subduction Zone, which represents both a public safety threat and a threat to the region's water supply and economy. And whereas Washington County's emergency management advises residents to sign up for emergency alerts, practice evacuation routes to higher ground, keep a go-bag packed and ready, and buy flood insurance. And whereas several local entities, including Clean Water Services, Tuolotin Valley Irrigation District, and the Joint Water Commission have worked with local partners to secure funding for seismic modification of the dam, which resulted in significant additional investment in Reclamation's Safety of Dams program and accelerated the Scoggins Safety of Dams project that is in its final design phase. Now therefore be it resolved that on this 28th day of May 2024, the Board of Directors for Clean Water Services does proclaim May 31, 2024, in Washington County as Scoggins Dam Safety Awareness Day. We call on all community members to understand the continued importance of dam safety, the role we play in staying safe from potential dam failure, and why investment in and patience during construction modifications of this infrastructure is so important. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any Board comments with regard to this proclamation? We have a motion and a second to adopt said proclamation. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. And before we come down to take a picture with the two of you to memorialize this proclamation, I would just like to add not only thanking our federal delegation for working with Clean Water Services and the Washington County Board of Commissioners to put all of the funding pieces into place, and this has been going on for, well, I think you mentioned, 2010 is when the Scoggins Dam was identified as one of the most seismically vulnerable dams. So, it's been almost 15 years already, and as you mentioned, 2029, construction is expected to start, complete by 2035, 2036. Well, this project is at the intersection of agriculture, urban drinking water, and urban industry, right, with the work of Clean Water Services releasing cleaned water into the Tuolotin River. That would be totally disrupted if, if the dam had an impact. So, it's the intersection of all these pieces of life here in Washington County that come together. So, I thank not only the current employees of Clean Water Services under the leadership of Diane Tanaguchi. of Diane Tanoguchi Dennis, the CWS CEO, but those who came before us and who have worked diligently to advance this project and work with the Bureau of Reclamation as well as Congress. So, go ahead Commissioner Willey.
I can only hope the seismic event moves slower than our federal government for funding this dam. So, maybe 20 years from now, maybe further along, but we gotta be patient.
Maybe never. Wouldn't it be nice if the Cascadia event just never happened?
That's right.
That'd be great. All right. Well, would you care to join us for a photograph?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. I wrote all, no, I didn't write all over my proclamation, so I can hold it up. Diane, would you be able to join us too?
I don't know. I think we probably are. That's a great question though.
Well, tonight, we do not have any action items on the agenda. Diane, was there any, was there one last thing you wanted to say about Scoggins?
No, we're just very thankful to the federal delegation and to our state delegation, of course, the board and supporting of this important project.
Yep. Thank you very much for bringing it to our attention and happy Scoggins Dam awareness.
You did prop me and I will say one thing. A lot of people don't know that that's a earthen dam. That means it's dirt. It's not like you think of a typical dam of all concrete. And I think it's, if it's not the largest, it's one of the largest earth dams in the United States. And so, that's why it's been so critical for so many years. As the chair pointed out, not only do we treat wastewater downstream and we count on that flow, but the industrial, all of the drinking water, the, all of our agriculture. And don't forget that even though we look at the eastern part of the county and say, "Look at all that development," most of this county is ag, ag and forest. So, it's very critical to us, that particular facility.
Thank you Commissioner Rogers, I appreciate that. Alrighty then, we will move to the next item on our agenda, which is our second public comment period for this evening's meeting. This is an opportunity for members of our community to come and address us for up to five minutes an individual. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to do so?
We do. We have Dan Tatman and Daria Bingham.
Thank you Clerk Moss. We'll wait just a minute while we get your materials, sir. Thank you. All right, we have it. If you'd like to go ahead, sir.
Okay. My name's Dan Tatman. I'm new at this. I reside at 24351 Southwest Middleton Road, Sherwood, Oregon, which is in Washington County. I'm a semi-retired vet, Vietnam veteran on partial disability with diabetes. I also have a bachelor's degree in engineering. Mark Simon couldn't be here today. Simons, he just was tested for COVID this morning and so he decided not to come in. I'm going to read what he had presented and if I have time, I'll continue on with mine. Basically, he says, "I know that each one of you understands your individual and Washington County facility of, and legal responsibilities and duties as the elected officials for governing and monitoring the activities and operations of Clean Water Services." By the way, they do a really good job. "I'm bringing these issues to you tonight so that you can be appraised of them and to help you guide the management of Clean Water Services to a fair and appropriate resolution of such matters. I trust that my public testimony to you tonight will protect me from any whistleblower retaliation by Clean Water Services. Due to the human nature, I don't expect Clean Water Services personnel to admit they have taken an incorrect approach on any of these matters or will agree to any other points of view without direction and guidance from you as their Board of Commissioners. I have previously sent to each one of you a letter dating March 22nd, 2024, describing my initial concerns regarding the Brookman Road Sewer Line Project. I trust that each one of you has read this letter. I have subsequently sent an additional follow-up letter via email to Clean Water Services Attorney Carolyn LeBlanc on May 23rd, 2024, that was to be forwarded to you by her. I'm not sure whether you have received or read that letter or not. I'll use my brief time here tonight to quickly summarize the major points in both of these letters, along with one other Clean Water Services related topic. I sincerely, sincerely hope that you will strongly consider my testimony and use it in your fiduciary capacity over the Clean Water Services and not just rely on them to handle it. In regards to the pipeline, my primary issues are issues regarded as follows. One, the reimbursement district needs to be expanded to a larger number of property owners. U.S. Board Commissioners over the Clean Water Services has the flexibility and authority to do that. Two, the diameter and cost of the pipeline that is currently being proposed to be charged to the property owners in the current reimbursement district is larger than will be required for those specific property owners. Either the number of the property owners in the reimbursement district needs to be expanded or the size of the cost of the proposed pipeline needs to be reduced. Easement-related payments to the property owners, approximately $674,000, are being included in the cost of the pipeline that are being charged directly back to the property owners through the reimbursement district. Such payments need to be excluded from such costs. Loan administration fees of 2%, approximately $836,000, will be collected by Clean Water Services from the property owners who finance the sewer assessment charges. These fees seem extremely high for an organization with a nearly $700 million operating budget and over $1 billion in assets. I find it difficult to believe that any additional manpower, systems, or software will be required on behalf of the Clean Water Services to collect such amounts. Accordingly, I recommend that the 2% fee should be eliminated. Clean Water Services will file a property lien on each property owner who finances a prop line assessment. Since the majority of property owners don't have the thousands of dollars to pay for their assessment upfront, the vast majority will finance the charges. In addition to the actual assessment charges, these liens will be another significant financial burden placed upon the property owners. They will significantly reduce the amount of funds that property owners will be able to borrow from a financial institution for home equity loan or refinancing, as this lien will be deducted from the current appraisal value of their home. I recommend that such liens not be placed on the properties by Clean Water Services until time, till such time the properties are going to be sold or hooked up to the sewer. All these points are more thoroughly supported and expanded in May 23, 24, letter I previously noted. I encourage you to read that letter in detail. The other item I would like to make you aware of this evening is in regards to the oversight of Clean Water Services. In the process of committing with various Clean Water Service personnel over the last several months, it has become increasingly clear to me that they generally have an attitude that they don't have to answer to anyone. For example, upon my communication with Catherine Adams Wenenberg of Washington County's Internal Audit Department, I was shocked to be informed that such department has been informed that they were not allowed to perform any internal audit procedures regarding Clean Water Services operations. Based on the size of Clean Water Services' operating budget, I find it to be very alarming that Clean Water Services' operations are not subject to same oversight, scrutiny, and controls as other county operations. B, upon communication with Amy John of Oregon Secretary State Office, I was also informed that they have no internal audit authority over Clean Water Services. Although Clean Water Services does receive an annual financial audit by a third-party firm, that audit does not cover or opine on numerous internal audit functional and operating areas such as the following.
Your five minutes are up. Could you?
Can I summarize? Okay. And it's significant cost impacts, improvement in operational practices and procedures and public practices, increased efficiency effectiveness, performance and equity of public service, enhanced accountability systems and transparency of operations, cybersecurity, travel training. In summary, I appreciate the time you have gained in meeting tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we do have, do have the two letters, the testimony that you've read tonight as well as the other letter that you mentioned.
I appreciate it. And I will be back with mine one of your other meetings. Thank you very much.
Go Navy.
Any questions? Oh yeah.
Thank you very much. Would any other member in the auditorium, we should provide public comment for up to five minutes, give you just a moment to raise your hand, start coming forward. Not seeing any in the room. Would any member online via Zoom, we should provide public comment for up to five minutes on any counter-related topic, give you just a moment to utilize raise hand function. Not seeing any hands, Chair Harrington.
Thank you Clerk Moss. Next, we have board announcements and I'll do the usual future meeting announcements. Whether you like it or not, June is at our doorstep. Friday is June, Saturday is June 1st. So, next Tuesday, June 4th, the board will have a work session starting at 9:00, reconvening later in the day, usually at 1:00 P.M., because we have our board meeting at 9:00, at 10:00 A.M. On Monday, June 10th, we'll have our monthly board roundtable. That's a different day than usual. This month, we're having it on Monday, June 10th versus the first Thursday and that will start at 9:00 in the morning. The next day, Tuesday, June 11th, we'll have just a full work session day starting at 9:00 A.M. The following Tuesday, June 18th, we'll have a work session that starts at 9:00. We'll pause that, convene as the Housing Authority Board of Directors starting at 10:00 A.M. And then following that meeting, we will go into the Washington County Board of Commissioners meeting and we have the adoption of the Washington County budget and all of its component parts. So, that'll be a big meeting. We hope to reconvene the work session immediately following our lunch break at 1:00 P.M. Then on Thursday, June 20th, we have the annual State of the County presentation that will be here in the auditorium from 6:00 P.M. to 7:00 P.M. We hope you'll join us. Tuesday, June 25th, will be our last set of meetings for the month of June. Work session starts at 2:00 in the afternoon, followed by a board meeting in the evening at 6:30, just as we've done here tonight. Are there any other board announcements for this evening? Alrighty. Well, seeing none, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second. All those in favor of adjourning tonight's meeting, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you commissioners, any opposed? The motion carries unanimously, five to zero. We are hereby adjourned.